You ready?
Ready.
Let me know when we are live. We're live?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Today is Monday, January 29th, 2024. It is now 6:02 PM. And this is a special City Commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic where we possess, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's two flags now. All right, Madam Clerk, the roll call?
Roll call, Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanés.
Present.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have call.
Thank you. Next item?
Public comments, item three.
Anyone for public comments? Seeing none, next item?
Item four, Special Agenda Items. Item four, a discussion and possible appointment of commission member by mayor and city commission.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, I have an opinion from you that suggests we have a meeting. Please give us context.
Yes, pursuant to the charter, there is a... When a position of city commissioner vacated, the city commission before the election has the right to appoint a particular individual to serve the term of the deceased person on the next city election for commissioner.
All right, thank you.
That will be 3.02, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
3.05.
05.
So, obviously, we've all known what happened to our friend, our dear friend Candida Blanca. And, you know, now we go to a familiar process that the city has gone through many times of looking to see if we fill a seat or not in appointment, right? Right now, we are in a pivotal time in the year for us as a small city. We're in the middle of a budget process in Tallahassee and the federal government, one that is going pretty well up to now, but we're going to need all hands on deck to secure the over million dollars that we have currently allocated. But that, you know, it can be erased pretty quickly if we don't have the right relationships in place. So with that, I want to open up to the table for discussion on, you know, the potential appointment of commission member tonight. So who wants to lead the discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I want to give my opinion, and based also on the city attorney's opinion, I do tend to defer that to him as a subject matter expert. Right now, our city has a lot of exciting and positive things going on. We just had our first State of the City address. Over 300 residents came out and enjoyed that and heard the mayor speak on a lot of the things that we have done in the past and a lot of the exciting things coming now in the future as well. With that being said, we have many boards here in the city. We have a lot of residents that are involved in those boards, and we get to sit up here in front of the commission or in front of the city as commissioners as the face of a lot of these projects and exciting things that are getting done. But these board members are behind the scenes working just as hard as we are, and they don't get the recognition that we do. So the residents on those boards, it's a thankless position. It's volunteer as well. We also have residents that are very involved at the county level. They may not be on boards, but they're very involved at the county level and in our schools as well. But there is one resident in particular that I want to highlight because this resident is involved not only on our boards, having served on, I believe, all of our boards. Even in 2022, when I chaired the 75th Anniversary and the 75th Anniversary Committee, Fourth of July Committee, this resident was on that as well. Our kids also coincidentally go to school together, and in that school, we go to plays to watch our son perform. And there's a little section in the front there that's cordoned off for special types of parents, the types of parents that go above and beyond, the types of parents that when we sit back and we see, you know, behind the stage, there's a bunch of artwork and things that are done. These parents spent countless hours volunteering to make sure that the stage looked beautiful and the kids were prepared. In that section, this specific person was sitting there as well because aside from being a parent there, they go above and beyond in that location as well and making sure that that school and the performance were a success. So this person I'm going to give my opinion on is, and basically, I would like this person to be appointed, is because they're not going to just sit in the seat that's open over there sadly, that it's open. They are going to go, as they've already proven on our boards here at the county level as well and in the school systems with their children, that they're going to go above and beyond every chance they get to make sure that whatever it is that they're involved with is going to succeed and be the best that it can be. So in my opinion, the person that I think we should appoint is Natalie Millian.
Okay. Does anyone else have a discussion on that? Go ahead, Commissioner. Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, I'd like to add to your words that you're talking about the Natalie Millian. And I remember a couple of years ago, I had to nominate somebody for one of the boards. That was many, not many, but some years ago. And I remember I was very proud to nominate Natalie for that board. And she did a wonderful work. She was very, very, very fine. She's a very educated girl. I call girl because she's a girl. I'm just joking. It could be my... Her father is there. So she's a very well-educated girl, very well-prepared with experience. So I think it's a great, great nomination.
Vice Mayor, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I respaw, I... I mean, I think if I have to make my vote, I just vote now for her.
I just want to make sure everyone gets their comments on the record. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues wholeheartedly, although I'd like to say that there's other residents that have also served that are just as qualified, but there's a distinction with Natalie. Natalie has been serving for many, many, many years, and we think alike. You know, that's the most important thing to me. She cares about this city quality of life, you know? As I sit here, I've sat here for many years, and my main impetuous of serving has been quality of life. What can I do? What can I say? What can we legislate to make everyone's life better, safer, cleaner, and quieter? So with that said, I would welcome, in open arms, Natalie to serve on this commission with us.
So I tend to agree with all of you, and I'll put my thoughts on there. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I just... Her father smelled old for many years, but I also call Natalie a girl because she's a mother. She has two children, beautiful, and they are residents of West Miami. So everything she has been doing has been doing in favor of the city, really.
Yeah, so on that note, I would say I've known Natalie and her family and her husband, and her family in particular, for a very long time. And no one in the last decade has been more active in the city of West Miami in service of the city. She's served on two charter review boards. I know she was appointed by you on the first one, and then by me on the second one. She's served on the code enforcement board, served on the planning and zoning board, served on the 75th Anniversary Task Force and Fourth of July Committee. You know, just going above and beyond in her service to the city. But not only that, but also having the experience of government. I mean, you said she's a very educated girl, and, you know, I would agree, she has a master's in public administration, you know, from FIU, and has served in many different political roles and political offices. So we're going to be getting, with her nomination, a very seasoned person who can hit the ground running immediately for our city and can really help us where we need it, which is at the different levels of government and the small-town issues. Vice Mayor Blanés, I know she shares probably a lot of thought process with you on quality of life and really details. So I would, I'd be remiss, though, if I didn't. I see someone walked in, County Commissioner Kevin Cabrera, sitting in the back there. And I, you know, I know we work together so much, and anyone who works, you know, who sits on this commission has to deal with him quite a bit. Do you want to add anything before we move discussion along?
Thank you for your visit. The commission, add six.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of the commission and the folks that came out here today. And we're never too far, as our office is right down the street, as I know the mayor used to watch down on us from his apartment, make sure we were keeping West Miami a priority. But first of all, I'd like to start off by, I think, you know, I'd like to make sure, you know, a recognition of Commissioner Candida Blanca and her many years of service. I know since 2010, she's served and served distinguishedly, and, you know, it's, again, it's in an unfortunate situation that we find ourselves here today. Hopefully, we still had her with us, and, again, prayers to her and her family, and, again, many thanks for her and her service. But I would echo your sentiments. I know that Natalie has served, I believe, since nearly a decade, since 2017, on, I think, almost every board you guys have had. I know her to be a distinguished individual, has served, like, again, you know, many folks, you know, when it comes to public service and public life, might not necessarily have served on a board, which, as you guys said earlier today, and as I know from the counties, sometimes it's these positions that don't get the recognition, but that really do a lot of the hard work that sometimes we elected officials get the credit for, but it's really them behind the scenes doing many of the great work and volunteer hours and making sure that things work and run smoothly. So, again, I would agree with what you guys said. You know, I know that she's a good example of West Miami. You know, she's lived here for many years, raising her family here. I think she has a wonderful husband. It depends on the day. But honestly, I know that Natalie loves West Miami. Natalie is West Miami. So, again, I would echo your sentiments and encourage you all that that is a good decision, and I know that she will make us all proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Echoing some of the commissioner's words, one observation that I've had about Natalie is that she doesn't say too much. She's soft-spoken, but, boy, her actions speak louder than words. And the old adage, "Speak softly and carry a big stick," that applies to her. You know, she... And people that are like that, you know, that's what character and integrity and courage is all about. Their actions speak for themselves, and that's one observation that I made through the years about Natalie.
Well, I know we have a code enforcement board, actually, which I know Natalie, I'm sure you don't miss, too much, at 6:30. So we are running a time crunch, and it seems that, you know, it's great when you have a situation where there's, you know, a no-brainer, and, you know, it's very rare times in government where everyone can agree on something. So does anyone want to move this discussion forward?
I'll make a motion.
I second the motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Madam Clerk, well, state your motion very specifically, just so...
I make the motion to appoint Natalie Millian to the vacancy to City West Miami Commission.
Thank you.
And I second that motion.
You have a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanés.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you. Now, you don't get to sit up here yet. There's some paperwork which will have to get done. Madam Clerk, would that be something you can accomplish at this meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me just five minutes, I can prepare the oath and come back to administer the oath to Ms. Millian.
Absolutely. Let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you.